Good morning. Good morning. Can we start our meeting?
Guten Morgen.
Can we request the sound system to give us a national anthem? Can we all stand up to start the meeting?
Can Muslims all stand? And the folks listen for the language.
Thank you very much.
Vielen Dank.
We may sit down.
Can here a sit?
Oh, before we do anything, it is important to introduce ourselves to you so that you know everyone of us.
Vor uns kann angehen mit der Verrichtung von der Dach ist es sehr belangreich, dass uns die Publikum und Verrosal vorstellen. Da die Leute alle City vor.
I will start by introducing myself.
Ich shall begin on myself and your foretale.
My name is N'Gosi Mwana, a member of the Social Development Portfolio Committee.
Mein Name ist N'Gosi Mwana, ein Leiter von matkableker Dienste.
I am given an opportunity to chair this committee.
Die Galäte sind mir gern um hier die Verrichtung als eine Forsete early.
I'm coming from Eastern Cape.
A Kompanuskopf.
A place called Queenstown, Wiclessy area.
Repliki medinam Beach Town.
I'm happy that you are here.
Es blieb dann die letzte.
To listen to the Amendment Children's Act.
Um der Komplett der andere Wert on where.
I'll give the opportunity to other members to introduce themselves before I welcome you.
Ich soll Hallo entgeht hier an andere Leute um das auf vorzustellen vor uns kann angehen.
Good morning everyone.
Guten Morgen alle.
My name is the Kang Stock.
Sorry, what is number?
My name is the Kang Stock.
The name, my name is the Kang Stock.
I'm a member of this portfolio committee on social development.
Es ist ein Leiter von Jede Portfolio Komitee.
I'm originally from the Northern Cape.
Es war Sprung von den World Cup.
I'm originally also from Warrenton, it's about 71 km from Kimberley.
Neti langen in Warrenton, so 12,70 km weg von Kimberley auf.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Greetings everyone. My name is Menjani Mangani.
No ma, a north west.
I am from the northwest.
Ne patia, komite deya social development.
I am a part of the committee of the social development.
So, netwa ke la kovala a northern Cape.
I am very happy to be here in the Northland Cape. I'm, I'm sure that we gathered here today to speak about the children's bill and you contribute on that, thank you so much.
Abshin.
Greetings everyone.
Bitaramina Nikensani Kaiti Bilankulu Mahavan. Ne uangwa niwa di membera ta portfolio committee as social development.
Sorry, maloko a portfolio committee, ele loko la khabulolo, ele fapa la khabulolo naajo.
Akaya kubekubebriwa no ma ali Pompo.
Na kitoa ko, kinnantide ko, Provinza Limpopo.
Ka Regina nomen Mashabani, former called Mopani. I said, I'm from Lipompo.
So.
The region called, nomen Mashabani, former called Mopani.
Kitoa ko, Limpopo mo kaulon ea nomen Mashaba, e bidua koreke Mopani.
Edgiyani sa region.
Ele mo kaulon po tla na ea giyani.
Nimitonga wa shiviri ni membera ya parliamente ya hina.
Ne na kile loko la parlamente Kaliboha.
Morning. Good morning. My name is Maris Kbers. I'm a member of this portfolio committee. I would just say thank you very much for making time to be here, to also witness what we've been talking today here. Vielen Dank.
Heute Guten Morgen an ihr alle.
Welcome and good morning.
Ik is Achbare Gisela Oppermann. Ik is der Tochter von Riroigrund, so ik is von den Nordkampf.
It's nine and I.
Ik kom da, waar die Antam, die Boesmanland en Namakwaland in een vloei.
There from Antam in the Namakwaland, well, people are speaking in the Boesman's.
So das meine Vorrecht, um für Ochentussen die Menschen zu wies, um nach die Menschen zu kommen, Leister, en ik zie uit naar uw waardevolle insitter.
Will it for me to be here in front of the people today to discuss with them and also to hear things from their side.
Good morning everybody.
Guten Morgen alle.
My name is Alexandra Abrams, I'm from Cape Town in the Western Cape, and thank you very much for coming out and we look forward to engaging with you.
My name is Mizwana Abrams, I'm from Cape Town, and I'm looking forward to be with you guys today here, so that we can share whatever we have to say for today, for the day.
Ee tumelang, libitza laka ke Anastasia Motoun, ke among walelo ko la komite ya social development, kitoa ke le kaute, ke alovo.
Greetings everyone, we are from the Department of Portfolio Committee, Department of Social Development, and we are glad to be here with you, thank you very much.
Guten Morgen alle. Guten Morgen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Guten Morgen.
Good morning.
Was 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 hier?
Yeah, we are here, thank you.
Ik is Letitia Arens.
I'm Letitia Arens.
A lead van hier portfolio komitee.
A member of this portfolio committee.
En ik wil voor je bij je dank je zeg dat julle hier is.
I want to say thank you for you to be here.
En dank je dat je loonze kinders belang op julle hadra.
Thank you for taking the, what, the thing of the kids to be here, the thing of the importance of our kids.
Ons zie uit naar uw vruchtevolle insitter op julle restekke wetgeven, vielen Dank.
We are looking forward to the fruitful discussions that will be taken place today, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Vielen Dank.
There seem to be a problem of these mics, I don't know, people can't hear the message because they are making a lot of noise, I think they must try and give us the ones that are audible enough for the audience. Otherwise, we waste. It's either volume too high or maybe because we are trying our level best not to come closer to the mic, but people at the back, they can't hear this.
Sure, yes.
Can they sort that out whilst I'm doing the welcoming? I wish to welcome everyone in the meeting, hope that this will be sorted soon. We are not going to waste time.
Standing in front of the speaker, that's why I can't push it.
Delay you in this meeting. The purpose of this meeting is solely to come and update you about the children's amendment bill that you know for a fact that once upon a time, an act was published, sized, and you were consulted by that time to have some inputs, as today, like to hear from you saying about this bill, whether do you go with it or you don't support it. When the presentation is gonna be done, because I'll go through the, just roughly, and do the overview of what is it about.
Seresake eto in front of faba khaitsuki, molauka kongak, hoza molau, chomo obuanga bana, yakahari ti filiha kualo molau, o amanangli, bili eri ketsen fano faka, jalo rabata kunko ma ikuto alo, na kayo na kore, halui badile, aloa ya amuchela, hoza halui amuchela, kama zoma, hoza halui dubalane leone, keser tami resete ota fano farabata kore, retokisane lelo na ka bili e.
So, we will allow you to have time to have input, and in that input, when you finish talking, you must indicate whether you support it or you reject it.
Kajalo, retlohuli leta kore, le nele na koyakon sadichwale talona, me etaraha lin sadichwale zo talona, lubuwele khalo sa kore, aloa dubalana, le molauka konga ono o, molau chomo o, bili enue e, hoza akhalu dubalane leone.
Thank you very much. If I go to section 22 of the children's act.
Kajalo, hakya kushe about section 22 ya molau o wabana.
But we won't be rigid for you to mention section by section, but what we will appreciate, if you quote something, you must refer it to the act and refer it to the bill that were given.
Kajalo, harate koe bala, le foko kale foko, mesera rabata kose kopa mo kolo na ke kore, haye le kore, le troyile si, wo mo koeone, reko pa koro, lu shebe inka e, le troyile, le bole e bapisaa, le e le komo lau, kesera rabata kore, lu sidira le bole kore, le ya amochala, kama kha onzendja.
One of the amendments of this bill is referring to parental responsibility, that we all know that as parents, we are responsible for our kids.
Karlo ewe, ele tabona kore, ek habulo za mo koeone, ibu afano faka maikarabe lo abatsadi, le tabona kore, mo koeone, maikarabe lo aw abatsadi, ho tlo tlo akawo na, ibilera rabata kubona kore, loa amochala kasa la enzendja.
And also refers to the fathers who has kids but are not married with the, maybe the mother of the kid, and sometimes doesn't have a opportunity for their kids, it also touches on that.
Me hapese singse malau onu obuanga sona, isiguaka kanya, e borre baba nangle bana, me basanyala, bom ma bana bao, kore maikarabe lo abona, antenele la jangmo, kanyen e, mobili enue ya ro.
The other point is the child marriages, which we know that sometime in other areas, there is this forced marriages that are being taken, or that are being conducted and being done by the parents sometimes.
Inka ewe, erabata kubuaka neke konya DC wa kapana, sidira kama katoa ale mainzika dinakotse, nukutse, e kora bana bapa telezo akonya lo, bali banyaa, jano rabata kubona DC walelo, sa molau ono, molauka konga ono, male bana linka e.
There's also this one of unaccompanied migrants or any migrant child, which sometimes is caused by the human trafficking that is taking place currently whilst we are seated here.
Sesego sato ne hapet so obuanga sona, ke kanya bana, baba koro ha mona kenyaro na basapato, ke ba zadi, hoza ke ba koko mede, ele sleso se bakwanke kanya, ho kaba kanchi wa kapana, e melelo ne kabukukun twa, inka enzeyalo leone, ho tlo tlo, tarabona kore, e bakwa king, me rekabekisana jangleone.
Human trafficking is happening to boys' child or to girls' child, it doesn't separate whether you are a boy or a girl, but it happens because kids are being sold in other countries and in other people for certain reasons that you can't understand.
Kanya kore bana basitsha mona kengana kouwe, basapato, ke ba koko mede, hoza ke ba zadi, inira kala jana, ilekala baka na kore, bana bao utwa, baromele kati nakontse, ikuka kona batobango, baba rabata kona le bana bao, baba amuchela la baba ka, aile ngabo nefe, arase iti koreke baba ka, aile, kiri lezele inira kane jano jana, lele mona kenyaro na, serabata koma mo kopo lo mo koto.
There's also this one of the early childhood development, that also includes child with disabilities and which sometimes are neglected by our communities.
Haper nalakanya, bana bao, kowe ba kodise duang, bom afilo adicolozza bana baba isimadeni, dicoloza simbozo, kowe kona le ma tata abana baba nale bu kholé, bom afilo enzendjalu, le zona ke inka ewe, eri klenho koma mo kopo lo mo koeone, kubona kore, ma tata a, li tu koe toto koli bana ona, le zona ke bana baba enzendjalu, e aga ra rabo loa kasa la enzendja.
That one falls under section 91 according to your papers that you were given.
So kaka, lipambiru zeli ditwera, tabona so most section ya 21.
We understand that our townships, we've got ECDs, and sometimes are not registered as we would like them to be registered.
Le tala lakho kore, mo kung kubiwaka di ECD, se ino kore kana konge kadiya, kuadisi waka ma kha, rabata kore, inka bo di kuadisi twa kawo ne, inka e kubiwaka yene fora rabata kore, loner retloheli la kho komo.
This one of the foster care order always frustrates us, especially when we have kids that are infants, they don't have parents, maybe they are your sister's kids or your brother's kids, but they don't have means of living and then you have to apply the foster care.
Erberenali engwa kapiya, bana baba koko melo loangkuma lapik, komafilo, a e ho koko melan bana bai le ma siela, koho ona bana baba sunang ba zadi, kajalo inka e leone, rabata kore, kana kongo iksele, ino kore, batink bana bana ba kongo mo kaya, bana le, bom mo kula bone, hoza bo kai zadi abone, me to tabo tselo, hoza me kasa la e bo ne bo tshanezo hoza magayo, ba finleza kongo ba isitu ba ma filo, akho koko melan bana bai le ma siela te, rabata kubuaka yone leone.
We must not undermine the processes that needs to be followed when you are applying that foster care grant.
Kajalo haye le koro, obata kudira ko poya, kutuwa kama di, akho koko melan waana, yo isingwa kaho, re batahor, oska koko muloha, me lawana e beilueng, e o tshanezo kore we la telele.
There are also the centers, the parental centers for the infants, there is that funding that comes from the department which always needs to be, to be applied for, and we sometimes overlook that process of applying for those parental centers.
Haper, reali di sentara, ze diguze leon kore, hadi dirise duwa, ho koko melan bana baba enzendjalu, ho tshanezo kudiwa ko poya, tuzo ya ma di, akho ba koko melan, mo koto, jano bo tata kana koe ngote kore, me lawana e tshanezo kola telelo, ya kudi ra se, leone ya koko mulu chiwa, en kaya tshana ho koko mulu chiwa, rabata kubuaka kha e.
Second last is the adoption services, that also one is not familiar to our culture, because we think that we can't adopt a child which we don't know where she comes or where he comes, we only adopt our family, even if it's distant family relative, we only adopt those, but there is a process also that needs to be followed to adopt a child. And we are encouraging the communities to do the adoption, because you'll find those kids in centers that doesn't have anyone to go and visit, they will spend the Christmas, it's Christmas time, they will spend Christmas and big days in the centers, and they would love also to be exposed in some of the activities that are happening outside the center, thank you.
Eden hapet berenali enue, eri bizan koreki, akho adopta bana, ra ito kolo kanti ro na, zakama koba nso, kasa se karo na, hoza twa elo ya ro na kore, re adopte waana, yor se iti koreke ma, o twa kai kona kama, jano seresidira, ra lo ro koe zalo kolo, khotaleza kolo, lutanele twa elo, enzendjalu, ya kui te la, le kui adoptela bana, kahune bana bano, baba di la ko, di sentara, nseba koko balan ko koto, kadi nakosidi mona, te te di tshanal, sa bo grismose, hoza meleto, eri le, e tumeluangke, malapa mo, bana bano ba bone, kaba kono kona libitu melo jo bo tshanalijo, utlafikela, ino kore, ke bo tata, kajalo, re bataho, jalan kai, enue e mo kuro na kore, re leke akui tuta, ho adopta bana le ro na, ino kore, taro kono ko ba tuza.
Lastly, but not least, the role of the municipality.
Enden sa bo fe lo, retlohukuaka, bi karabe lo ba masebala.
Because all what we are doing, we have to involve the municipalities to assist us, in terms of maybe you want a site for the ECD, or in terms of the rates and services that you have to pay, sometimes you have not get the fund the way you wanted to get, then you have to go to the municipal and negotiate on how we are going to pay the rates and services through the municipalities.
Kajalo, retlohoba ta tuza ya bom masebala, kala baka na kore, kana kosi degu kongo, obata kui trome la, le fe lo la ECD, la ho kodi sa bana, kajalo, o tshanezo kore, udire du lo kaya, kama la wa masebala, masebala o, ta ho tuza kongo, uka bona jang se itza, se uka toman, kuya kaho, hoza le fe la, la ho koko melan bana mo koeone. Mtoya kaka khasa lefe la la koto kobe lamba na mokoyone. Kafale kagurin lele ewe. Otshane tjo koro masebala akutu se fitu koro oka duela jang. Di le zedi tshana li di reiti zedi duelo wang. Sa me iti le motlaka se jalo le jalo. So di lezo di akoke kajalo tshane rabale tabo masebala. Baritu se katula kanya oyo ke kore re la te la katshane.
In most of the public hearings that we're going around, because this is the third province, if not fourth, we are moving around with the municipalities. But we know for effect, this is a critical period. We are about to elect maybe the new mayors, the new councillors. So today unfortunately, we don't have part of them. We are not together with them. But we want them to listen to the pleas and challenges of the communities where we always go.
So moment zama yo ke eno ya ro na. Re zama ya mokobomasebala baba faro kha ne. Re berikisa na mokole bone. Kona jano jana ra yizo kore re kofita ta le koro koto miwe. Bo di maya rababancha, ni ba councillor rababancha. Harre le fa bata le bone. Bata kore za di kwey tole matata alo na lo. Jano kama swagika kora banza ba tshareti leka di kro. Kona jano jana harre na le bone fano kumpie no. Me ra ra ta kora barreze matata di di kwey to talo.
That was the summary in terms of the amendment bill that we have come for. And would like to appeal to you to stick to the amendment bill that we've come for. If anyone has got something outside this that we have come for, there is a table, there are officials there. Can they wave their hands so that you can see them? You can take whatever submission to them. Can you wave their hands? That table is full of the officials that are a backup support for us. If you've got anything that you think it's not in line with what we have come for, you can submit it to them. We'll, because we're going to give you an opportunity to input in the bill so that at least you assist us on reminding on what is it that is outstanding in the bill and what do you think you would like to see in the bill. Can we agree on that?
Kajalo seriso se bakai se kitso bu kanya fe la. Kaha bill eri kese infanofa. Jano. Re kopa koro hay le koro obata kubuaka se sese sa kwaluang mo bilin enue. Oh ele bo tata khasa kwey to befele ona le. Re kopa koro we kwalle mopatiring. Then we se kota folintele bo me bano bakata bakawaiva akiru le baba bone ne. So bone bata amochala idipanbiru zama tata alo na. En nen baya kudi romela kamanso mangoma faping abatoka kora badisoko ho one. Kaha kona le se befele se sese ko toko. Sese sa amanini bill. Twe twe se kwal. Obasinme. Me bata dira kore. Loena utu suwa kantka ewe utla be ubuaka ye. Ne kona serabata kusidira. Rabata konganpare la din khatza bill enue. Rabata kudi fabo kha. Hakaka kona.
Now is the time to identify hands for you to have inputs on all the summary that we had. And you have to introduce yourself because we can't be introducing ourselves the whole hour. But when you speak, before you speak, you must introduce yourself and you must tell us which stakeholder are you representing. If you are not representing a stakeholder, it's not a train smash, but you can come and introduce yourself and have your input. Can I identify hands?
Kajalo ritlo kopa kore. Le sukut kaka tshuleza ma toho. Halo bata kubuaka kha. En epe le ubua. Re kopa koro we kiti si kati tjo kore kiwe na man. Le koro we melasitao se tjo khasa o le lokola bana le se adeba fe di stakeholders. Hay le koro kha o le lokola se bele sa teu. Oska tshuye kha se bo tata. Oka tshaki sa di khatza hak. Kajalo re kopa koro lutuleza ma toho. Balu bata kubuaka le bone. Ban kaba bata no.
You don't have to necessarily follow the way I presented it, but you can talk to anyone in any section that you feel free to start with.
So le kana loaske loa. Alu kro kola te la tshula kanya ya bill e ya kaha inza. Halo bata kubuaka di khatza lo. Kana simula kongo le kongo fe la. Mo bata nte. O kolo le se akubuwa so bata kusiduwa.
I can see a hand there, over there. See pickant san. Can you come in front? Or can you come to the mic? Is that the only hand? You can come ma. Come forward. At the back? Yes. That's three, number three. Is that all? Okay, let's proceed with that three. Sanumli basi sabitunani. Make it snappy bra. You can come forward and take the mic.
So re kopa koro.
Over to you.
Lotlen kafake le balo bata kubuwa lutene momo le ono o. Katwe twe.
Okay, my name is Nosipopongwayo. I'm a social worker at Tchokomelo.
Lina la me ke Tchokomelo.
Nosipopongwayo.
Nosipopongwana.
I'm a social worker at Tchokomelo.
Eh ke mudire di loa koha kenseja.
Ma'am, I want to tackle the issue of section twenty-one.
Na kaba kubuaka.
I'm sorry, you are a social worker?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
You are the one that you are supposed to answer some of the questions that are here ne?
Me.
Huh? Are you going to answer all what you are saying? Or you've got an input on this?
I have an input. In fact, I have a question. Yeah.
And question?
Yes.
Maybe let's give you the opportunity. But social workers and the department members that are here must take the questions because there might be questions that will need them directly. We are a portfolio committee. We are not a department. We are overseeing the department. So that's why we have to give you instructions on how to answer these questions that you are going to ask. Maybe the answers are with you, but let's give you an opportunity. Don't come.
Eh bakaiso. Ba eli di ba di re di loa khasa di social workers. Re lebele tjo kore enne lo na ba di klenkoto. Araba di poto zedi klenkoto bo twa. Ro na reportfolio committee haka harre zena. Harre le fa pa re oka mezele fa pa kabo lo. Ma refele rata monachuno. Ya kora akaki sa di khatza hak. Me fe la. Re lebele tjo kore enne bone bata kura tusa kaha araba di poto ter na le to.
Okay. Um, I have noticed. Ugo ti section twenty-one is a very good section. As a result, it caters for unmarried fathers and their responsibilities and rights.
Ke le kwey tchokomese infanofa kore section twenty-one. Ke karlo ewe bo le me eleto takala bakana kore. Ibu afanuka borre baba sanyala le maikarabe lo abo.
However, my concern is however that we are not dealing much about their responsibility part.
Me ma bo tata bukenale bone bo bo kolo ke kora tshentlen tjo to taro na. Harre bereke tata ka.
Excuse me, there's a lot of noise. I don't know what's happening there.
Eh kato kumu du mo bo kolo bakaiso. Re kasi si ba.
This hall, this hall has got an echo. So we can't hear if people are moving up and down and.
Katwe twe bakaiso. Halo kana fafatslo a didimala. Nali ekoharokolo kujwa senke.
Uh, lady? Yes? Please assist us. Are you from the department? Yes. Ya bona wene? You have to be the one or you should be the last one. And assist people. And you are the one who's going to answer all these questions that are being asked. The question?
Ama.
Because you can cause a conclusion in terms of. Please, who comes?
Re kadi di malakoiye ni is bakaiso.
Over. Kupa kova si tjuan.
Eh, I would like to speak in Setwana.
Okay, Lina la me ke Nontese kholé.
Eh, my name is Nontese kholé.
Uh, ke tla buaka section twenty-one, parental responsibility.
I will speak about section twenty-one that deals with parental responsibilities.
Okay, by profession, I'm a teacher.
Eh ke murtabana eh ka profession yame.
Okay. I agree with that one of the parent responsibility.
Ki du malanali enue eduankama maikarabe lo abatadi.
But kiku paho add the responsibility cannot be responsibility. Can I add? Kiku paho ega mudi responsibility.
But I would like to add something, some more of the responsibilities because it cannot only be the ones that we have seen here.
Uh, if ulahore bana baro. The parent had to play a role no mupanembaro na.
I just feel that parents are not playing their role when it comes to our children.
Can, can you use the mic? You are just on the side. Okay. Ki fulahore di parent had to play a role. Esu teacher moma pilong abana babone.
So I just feel that parents are not playing their role in the lives of their children.
Sekai yaka attendance bana habata may schoolo senke.
For an example, the school attendance for these children actually leaves much to be desired.
Uh, bana bata riya grant. Mar, the activity si tsa schoolo. Bana haba, habane involve, for example, like uh, uh, the farewell. Ha kun suwa fifty rand. Parentu bana lakunsa fifty rand. Akore, wa na a participate them farewell. Even like grade R. Ha wa na ku grade R for the photo because of the photo ki memory. Young one, ki remembrance for wa na. The parent had inti and everyone uhopola masi tira kenteng. Kana koye ana zena schoolo.
So what we found here is that they do get some grants, but really then when it comes to some of their extramural activities where parents have to actually dish out some money for them to engage in these or maybe even to actually have some memory photos taken. Parents are not able to do all of this. So we wonder exactly why are things actually unfolding that way.
Kupa na le di kheti tsa kore. Parents utu kela bana bale wan child leded family atela. Aba kudu la fatenset. Ko wa wa na bale wanemutu.
And one other problem is that you find the parent actually leaving the home, leaving the children alone and he go and actually cohabit with some other people fast and set in code, leaving the children unattended.
Okay, ki tulem koko yone ewa ya schoolo. Keneki kupahore. Akari iti yaka di kolo recrea social worker full-time. At least social worker a share di kolo se five.
So I'm done with that one related to the school, but my plea and request was can't we make sure that maybe we do actually absorb some social workers in the schools? Maybe he must take a responsibility of some five schools to work with.
Because of sometimes retina kheti mo social worker. Social worker otla after two weeks muhona. Through the phone, how mora social worker kiku paho kore. Otla moskolo ritlo kubuisan abahore kinali bo tata juwa transport.
Because sometimes you find that they take too long, these social workers to come. Like when you call them, they might say to you, no, we'll come. Or maybe they will come just after some three weeks. But as a teacher, when I invite them to come to the school itself, they will say to you, look, I've got transport problems. I'm not able to come.
Ki tjo moko ewa. Ya kore ya ya schoolo ya no. Kibua ya no from the community ya no.
So now I'm done with the school part. Now I want to concentrate on the community side of things.
As a concerned parent, keneki kupahore. Ahonelenako ya kore nine o'clock bana babale moma kain. If alamo strating abanale a company, ya parent. As long as you are less than eighteen years because of. How tama busuku mo strating. Oko pana le bana bato rebo tuala. And you ask yourself for a future A guy. Ro na, na kere toko barakeri. Loselfish because of now you have teachers. Ra lo buta. Nenakalu ituti lo mo bu tualen nine o'clock busuku bana bato rebo tualamutrate.
So what I would like to request is that maybe we should have some law, kind of a curfew where we can say that children must be home before nine o'clock. Because most of the time you find them roaming the streets, walking with the people whom you don't even know who they are, having liquor. And then we used to tell such like once when we see them that they are being very selfish because we are teaching them and they continue in this particular way. So this is something that I'm making a plea so that we can maybe work on.
Okay. Yeah, section ninety-one, ECD one.
And now I want to move on to section ninety-one that deals with ECD one.
Uh, ECD right now in our province. The teachers have a high rate in a twelve-month contract. High rate water contract, twelve months.
The ECDs today, what we find that is people are actually contractually employed, which takes about twelve months only.
Ya no. Kona le baba sa hi riwa. Kale bakala kore haba eta de qualification etabone.
And some cannot get employment because they have not finished their qualifications.
So keneki re kakona ma teacher refunza. Ya ba sponsora for the bazar. Can le ba ECD? Le bone ba ene ba sponsoriwe. Yaka funza. And le bone department at least eba absorb. Eba se ela yaka full-time ma teacher. Aliyoni se we ela yaka ma teacher e ice cream lane.
So since funza does sponsor teachers for burseries. Now, my question was can't actually the same thing happen to these ones who haven't finished their qualifications to be sponsored the same way? Uh, because it is the same thing anyway.
Okay, the next one, foster care.
Ela te langa.
Section one-five-nine.
Section one-five-nine. Le one-five-seven yona ibuaka koto kobe lamba na baba snang bata di.
Keneki rataku kua kaya ne prosesi ewa ya foster. Otla iskela parent abahore are. Otla iskela auntie abare ke zailen wa na. Social worker ki sanse ki mopa heads. Wa na ha pay grant. Wa na ha grant even le ma di foster. Kenoki kopa poster se ewa. If first forward to you because of sometimes in wa na. Otsei wake auntie osa bereki.
Eh, the matter of foster care, I would like to say that it must be, the process must be fast tracked. Because what happens is that someone wants to adopt the child, but they have to wait for too long, waiting for social workers to come and process things. And for that, that is very difficult for them to even receive the required grant so that they can be able to continue with that responsibility.
The other one, still on that one. Fosterin, ah fosterin. Social worker ene involve. Ah wa na fosterile for monitoring.
And also if they do accept that the parent, this person can foster the child, we would like social workers to get involved so that there can be a monitoring system as to how is it going with the child.
Like in the past, I'm sorry to go back, but in the past, because of my neighbor, I know ona adoptile wa na. Social worker. Anatla tun, atlo kuseba wa na na di kaita marika. Angwa no robalamo beteng. Arinwa no pasite kuskolong. Social worker ni alu kuskolong. Ya kupo tsa mistres. Angwa no tla every day. But now di lezo wa harre di bone di lezo.
For an example, I'll refer to an example related to my neighbor. Eh, she fostered a child, but there was no follow-up from a social worker. Maybe came into the home to see whether the child has got winter clothes, whether the child does sleep on the bed or even at the school itself, not even going there to check whether is the child actually having a regular attendance in the school. All such matters need attention. Eh, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Esme Hartney, Child Welfare South Africa Kimberly.
Edi malamaha iso eh ken na Afrika Ali.
I would like to request the social cluster um, to look at the, to look at an alignment between the children's act and the school's act.
Kira taka kopa kora bato ba di granti. Eh, bale kia kubuwa.
The reason why I'm saying that is that we know that, um, the Children's Act, you are a minor until the age of eighteen. However, when it comes to the Schools Act, you are not legally, um, obliged to, um, attend school, um, after, beyond the age of sixteen. Should we render service to a child, um, who's over the age of sixteen? Um, there are times that the social workers, um, encounter problems, because a child, like we say, eh, we are saying, is that a child does not necessarily have to attend school beyond the age of, of sixteen. Thank you. Hello, are there any other hands? Okay. If you can come. That all? Okay. Yeah. You, you support the bill or you don't support the bill? All those people speaking, they never meant anything about supporting or rejecting the bill. Before, before you speak, eh, gentlemen, you just sit down, and can we go around to those people that were here and tell us whether do they support the bill? Just take the mic to them. Thank you, yes, um, I browsed through the bill and I do support it, thank you. Thank you very much. The other one? Can you raise hands, the ones that were here? Uh, that one, she spoke about the bill yet, she's still about to talk. I support all those bills, I support them. Thank you very much. The last one? Okay, simply we don't know the last one who was. And can we give over to you, gentleman? Introduce yourself first.
Gomelamba khol.
Greetings, everyone.
Na kalina ke Thalifan Reed, kochoko Pogwan Municipality, Kujankem Dwarpo. I'm also Thalifan Reed.
Oh, my name is Thalifan Reed. And I'm from Pogwan Municipality.
I'm also a volunteer, yakimozaka drak.
I am a volunteer of Moja.
Ke Moja kadrak in social development.
Moja drak, social development.
I'm also a volunteer, community nyaka doing drama, poetry, music and dance.
And I'm also a volunteer in my community, I do drama, I do dance and music, and poetry and music. My elders. I heard you spoke about the Children's Amendment Bill. I heard, uh, the previous speaker spoke about children, but I want to know, when they, they, they talking about children, eh, which range of children are they talking about? I would ask you not to come closer to the mic, just talk and just stand still. Come closer a little bit, yes? Um, we, I want to know the age, because I, as a youth, when they speak about the NGOs for us youth, we want to know the age range, uh, uh, specific for children. Okay, she said, uh, he says, it's not what he says, but he will repeat again. Oh, I heard you speaking about the NGOs. On our NGOs, when you spoke about them, there is lack of the audit, is?
Many NGOs, they have their missions and vision, uh, and their objectives that they want to achieve within their communities, that's why they register those NGOs, so that they can take children out of from their streets, uh. But most of our leaders are doing too much to, to the NGO, they only fund the NGOs that they have interest in. Only leaders, they're only funding the NGOs that they're interested in, that, that they have interest in. And I can allow re, I would tell them a Kimbal, we the morate save, there are many children that are neglected out of the street.
When you enter Kimberley, I think you have, you have noticed that.
Those who are smoking drugs and booze out of their streets.
The unfortunate part, we can't hear you, because you are close to the mic. I'm not saying go fuck, but still, eh, eh, we would like to, even if we don't. Uh, my chaplain, when you enter Kimberley, I think you have noticed that there are children abandoned on the streets. Some of them, eh, they are doing drugs, some of them are being fostered, um, onto shelters. Some of them are, are being, are being trafficked.
And I will, I'll root from what I've said before, there are NGOs who have the objective to take those children out of the, from the streets. And also, as, as volunteers, we are doing lot of job, but our officials, they don't have a resource. And the fact that I'll root that, I'm doing drama, I'm doing poetry, I'm doing music, volunteer aliso. We're being registered, but don't see an impact within our community, within our government.
As a volunteer, we are registered, but we do not see anything from our government. We're not getting anything, but we are registered.
Maybe those things are happening in a, in a cities, but in rural areas, there's no such.
I, I think those things.
Our government only comes to us when they come to make first audit. I will talk about Department of Health, I will talk about Department of Police Services and Police Services, they know, what, what is important for the health of your child.
I'll, I'll speak about these two departments, Health and Social Services, they know exactly, uh, the importance of the children.
You can see a child wearing uniform during school times in a street, what they are doing. There are community police forums that are supposed to patrol.
We have a community police forums that help to patrol during the day on school hours, but they are not doing anything, because you find school kids wearing uniform, eh, on the streets.
There are NGOs running volunteer aliso, but because of they don't have a resource, they're only enjoying payment, that, because our government also, they are relaxing to submit what, where they've been promised from us since nineteen ninety-four already. This bill is not built from now.
Uh, this bill comes from way back, but we have NGOs that, eh, were promised, but eh, not getting anything from the government.
We are only left with nine years to reach the amendment, gazetted amendment plan for twenty-eight National Development Plan, what we have achieved since nineteen ninety-four. Because these things that were heavy are those we have been having there during the party times. Even though our, our brothers have asked a question, if you're talking about a child, how old child must he have those age? Because our brothers are not working, because of, they can't even afford to make IDs. We're supposed to pay money to make IDs, but we know we are unemployed. There are no skills development offices for us as youth, as children.
Eh, excuse me, you must all finish up, bra, there are also other hands behind you.
There are also, there are no any skills development offices for us as youth within our communities, but there's a national development plan for us as youth. Only things that we know, we, sometimes they call us outlaws. Many people will come to stop talking this way because of, they're getting payment, but those who are not getting paid, they are there outside in the street. I've been volunteering for ten years in social development, but I don't have any skill that I've required from this office. From love life, from, there, there were many campaigns that went, that, that has been built within our communities, but now, where are they? Because of these political factions that we have within our future.
Eh, eh, do you support the bill or not? And your name?
I'm Thalifan Reed from Pogwan Municipality, even our municipality has been put under administration, because this political.
No, the name, the name.
I'm Thalifan Reed, I'm not supporting any bill, because this bill, they have been from nineteen ninety-four. Tell me, tell me. Thalifan Reed, I'm not supporting any bill.
Oh, he's not supporting any bill, he says his name is Thalifan, he's totally not supporting the bill.
Thank you very much. Over to you, bra, will you please take away the mic, I mean the mask, yes?
Good morning.
Eh, gomelang?
The voice is not so nice, I'm not sure whether I'm audible enough. Eh, I, I'm not sure, am I supposed to be as angry as the previous speaker? Or what is expected, but nevertheless, eh, we'd like to, to welcome the amendment of the bill.
Your name?
Oh, my, my name is Mpendulo Taweni. I'm, I'm a community member from the community of Richie. That is situated about forty kilometers, eh, from, out of Kimberley. As correctly said, that, eh, we, we're welcoming the amendment of the bill. However, eh, there is a worrying factor about the accessibility of the bills, or the, of the act. And the other one is the monitoring tool in place for implementation purposes. Now, the reason I'm mentioning these two points, eh, if I can just elaborate on them and then I'll go set. Is that you'd find, eh, community resource centers that is to do with children. If you enter them for different, eh, reasons, then you'd find, okay, that, the, 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 how would I put it, the people working there are not very much informed about these documents. Now, it becomes worrying as to how accessible these documents are, because at some point you'd want to have a copy of the Children's Act, especially in the area where I'm living, then you wouldn't find it, unless you come into Kimberley to get the document. There are people who are not, eh, that much informed, who think for themselves that there are certain things that they know about this document. So even though we have resource centers, there is no, there is no tool in place that ensures that uninformed people needs to be educated about this document. I'm talking now community-based and not stakeholders. So that is my worrying about the accessibility of this, of this document. With, with regards to the monitoring tool, it is worrying in terms of accountability. Eh, the reason being, for, eh, if I could make one example, you'd find, somebody may mention about the protection of children, you'd find, okay, as.
...anything from the DSD.
Sectionally will be divided and will be told for a re-well.
Uh, sectoral, uh, sectorally will be divided and will be told that we are actually not uh, uh, part of the D- DSD.
Me, ilohore, mwayadi programete ilohore radidira. Haesei te ilohore di amahela DSD.
And uh, 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 one of our problems that we're dealing with, they're not only about the DSD.
And me oné diseke ewa haripungwe lu sepe huchamuhoyone.
And also that we're not getting anything eh, eh, about, about it regarding it.
The programate ridira, ridira information, communication and technology programs.
The uh, programs that we are dealing with are i- information technology and the what else?
And the other one ridira aftercare also.
Oh, and we're also dealing with the aftercare.
Ridira academic support program.
We are dealing with the academic support programs as well.
Ridirali skills transfer.
And we, eh, we also are, are dealing with skills transfer.
We also deal with vulnerable children.
We have vul- vul- vulnerable children that we're dealing with.
Now without funding of some sort from any departmental government.
Gatalo, farza, I mean, we say, kaha, di luto ri, ri na linzo, na huchua kupuso.
Haru honu hube reka ri kutuluhile.
We cannot work freely because we do not have any funding.
Honeridira, meraka oru dirang, huchamudi ketinta ro.
We, everything that we are, we are dealing with, all the work, we are self-funding ourselves for this program.
Harena funding?
We don't have, we don't have funding.
Harena support?
We do not have support.
Harena operational costs?
And we don't have operational costs.
And se wasidira hore, reskara hona huvula from eight to four or five or nine to five.
And because of that, we cannot operate from eight to four or nine to five.
Haisha le rili keng, muri ngwaheng dilithanu.
We've been operating for uh, uh, five years now.
Haisei risamerinili ketelo, yamudireli loa.
We have never eh, 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 gotten a visit from uh, anyone from the social developments.
Now this clause thirty-five, I can balasinkle.
So now when I look at this section thirty-five, well.
In, in netifaleza hore, ke hona honali provision as a center.
It ensures that I can have a provision as a sa- as the, the, the person of the center.
And munatua tabake hore mori dutintengmu, rinali rewarona, rebi kangstok.
Uh, what's nice, where we are operating, we have um, our elder.
Oilohore, who former part of this committee.
Who's also a member of a parliament.
Renkangstoko hasi azame abelu tu, ko center ringyarona.
Uh, uh, that elder that I'm talking about, he has never visited our center.
Se osi lisapuchamuhonahu, iputahora, ame rebi stoko of a iti dirotse di nketi ilohore center rayaro na yadi dira, au badla hore, a kreye invitation.
What I'm asking myself is that uh, uh, this member of parliament, that is, uh, that is talk, what I'm asking myself is that uh, uh, Mr. Stoko, he's, he has never come to visit our, our center, which raises questions to me.
Yes. So ke chonete kaburipana, ke ke batahudi reiza, mo committing eh.
Oh, so those are actually the things that are, um, I wanted to present to you as the committee.
Ibili kidira libui kuelo hore, rekhono honewali tolinyana, lelohore reta hona huvu oporitia kalomi.
And standing here also pleading to you that we would like some funding that we can uh, help ourselves to operate our center.
Kialibo.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. You can start.
Good morning, um, Chairperson and Committee.
Eh, dumela, modula stulo de committee.
Morning.
My name is Rodi Robert Love.
Na, lina lamete godi, Robert Love.
Um, I am coming from an organization, a political party called the ACDP.
Ke toa, omo kaka wase politiki, obidua huke ACDP.
With inside, um, the Solplaki municipality.
Ode, omo tengra, masepala, olouwa Solplaki.
Um, we will be having representation as the ACDP with inside Solplaki as of next week.
Hotoha, mobe kengeetang, ritlo honela, buo, ro na jaka maloko ACDP, motengra, masepala olouwa Solplaki.
Chairperson, I want to say that provisionally, we are supporting the bill.
Ke batahuvua, modula stulo kere, eh, isihuhongo kabutlaloholo hoka, mehone, ray amohayala bili eno.
However, we have got, we want to raise just two concerns.
Ere, lifa huncho jalor na li, eh, matshuinyeho, alima baby fela arabatanho, atahisa.
Um, before I go to them, I want us just to have a short reading of the preamble of the Children's Act.
Pele, ki amohu choneka kabobe di ke ko pa hore, ke bale, ke buise kabukutuane, mateno, abu ankamo laoka kama wabana.
The preamble says that it is neither desirable.
Mateno ano abu ajana?
It is neither desirable.
Ere, tota kahuele te.
Nor possible to protect the child's rights.
Ibila kahonere, hore, erakona husirele zadi chwanelo zabaana.
In isolation from their families and communities.
Ri dira jaloo, rasatse nyelize bama lapa, abo onokho zama loko asachaba.
Chairperson, in terms of section eighteen, s- two.
Koyaka karolo eighteen-two, modula stulo.
The parental responsibilities and rights that a person may have.
Maikarabelo au badzadi eh, ah, chwanelo ibaka ngleyone.
In respect of a child, include the responsibility.
Ah, amanangle bana, ah, akareza maikarabe.
And the right to care for a child.
Le chwande, lo, yaku thokomela wana yo.
Our concern as ACDP is, um, science is trying to redefine what a child is.
Kajalo matshuinyeho, arnalo, oni jaka ACDP, ho, lebeha jaka AKET, science, ikaboyone, eleka hore, talose zahore, tota haribua kanguana, haribua ka eh.
We need to understand that uh, when somebody is a child, it means that this person needs the care of family, it needs the care of parents.
Re chwanese hokalohana, hore, motu, hay lenwana, othoka thokomelo yalelapa, othoka thokomelo ya badzadi.
But there is a concern, Chairperson, that seemingly government takes a, an hypocritical stance when it comes to the relationship between a parent and a child.
Be honali, but chatajor na li jo ne, modula stulo, mohu bona, ota bona le, na hurubusotota, ya itimukaanya, hay takka khany, ibua kakha nya, chiya ya, eh, kama no, eh, lente fahrha, badzadi, le bana.
This part of the bill is a bit harsh against the parents.
Ota bona, hore, karolo, eh, 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 ibua katsela, eh, simona te nyane bohala, kachano, le badzadi.
Um, I'm going to take off ram quickly. When government is spending or directing, whatever you can say, billions, as parents, we don't stand up in the street and say, why are you doing this?
Ke batahovu fapohaha, husekanyana, make it talosafana fa hore, eh, ha, eh, puso, ibua hore, ilohu zadi, di billione zamadi, yahu di grisa kolo, hore, harubuyiro, na jaka badzadi hore, eh, haza hoi, markachano le se.
When a child is failing at school, we don't look at the whole circumference of the challenges, we only zoom in on the parent and say the parent is a failure.
Yado, hawa na asoko schoolu, harlebe, maemo, okele, mabaka, ok, erleba, motzadi.
We want to see that the bill must entrench the rights and responsibility of the parent unto the child.
Mesera, batlahu, se thokomela fanafa, batlahu, ribili eno, isi kere, maikarabe, na kabutaloma, le bana le badzadi le bana.
Our police services is heavy-handed against the parents.
Eh, tiralaya, na yase po disilo ne, itchere, eh, ba, ba, badzadi, eh, ka, le thokolela, khametzen tata.
We are very careful to support corporal punishment.
Ri, ri, ke lathokoto, da hara, kanya ya, eh, husekheza, kochao.
But I believe that the bill needs to support parents in terms of other mechanisms to, to reprimand children.
Be dumela, hore, tota moloka, ono, otsanichohoro, lo, otsenheza badzadi, malebanale, hozawa, kadi kato zahore, ochaya, bana.
Today fifteen-year-old, fourteen-year-old, thirteen-year-old, twelve-year-old have easy access to alcohol, Chairperson.
Khumpione ana bana, badinwa, katsa fifteen, fourteen, eighteen, twelve, kira, hore, bodjalaba, bobonamu, thofuvela, ntlele matata.
There's a park just opposite this venue here.
Honali, parka, houfi lelefelo le, kahore, eh, erle mohoyone, houfinya.
Um, you will see over the weekend, um, there'll be a lot of kids here, you don't know how they get the alcohol.
Ota ebona, kama felo be, ke hore, idula itlize bana, basai la fanafa, ose idohoro tota.
We would like to see.
Babone kaya bujaa.
Things will include.
Kajalo, batlaho, ribili eno, eh, re bona, eh, akareza.
Chairperson, include.
Kab, modula stulo, eh, chwanese re akareze.
Protection of our children.
Chi rele, cho yaba na baro.
Against drug abuse.
Kachano le.
Against shabin owners.
Tiriso, esasiama, yadiri tiwati.
Against places that are selling alcohol.
Kachano le, batohai, lenbeng, badi shabine, li tiriso yabo jalo, mobanee.
Nonetheless, Chairperson, when we look at the, the current epoch.
Lifa huncho jalal, harleba, maemo, akajano jana, wena, modula stulo.
Everything goes against the family.
Di luto ke, guri di kachano, lelela.
Every piece of legislation goes against the family.
Eh, mola wana, mogolemo, okwala, okwala jana, kachano.
At the table there, at the table up front there.
What a full lane, jaka halu, zefapana.
You are what you are today.
Lo se, leliso, ne khumpione noja.
Because of a parent who had a strong hand over him.
Ka le baka la, motzadi, yona, akaha, badi zele, thokofalo, fatroza.
So we really would like to the bill, I'm pleading, I'm making an emotional plea.
Kajalo, tota ki, ko pa ka, huchabu tenyen, jopilo ya, make it kuela.
You need to address the issue of, of, uh, shabines close to schools.
Hore, chwanichohoro, lura, rolema, tata, adi shabine zere, na le zola, houfi le schoolu.
That needs to be addressed as a, as a matter of urgency.
Han, eh, eh, chwanichohoro, zelo, kato kaputaka.
We need to remember that the children, they are not just children today, tomorrow they are adults.
Re chwanichohoro, hore, bana, kabanele, bana, ruri, kamusitla, billeba, holo.
If the family disintegrates.
Hay, ilohore, lela, bala, le apuchao.
What is going to happen to this, our country?
Ki, tota, sasatati lalawani, ki, na, ha, ino, yaro.
I would like to rest that point there.
Ke rata, hoto, hala, cha, eu fela fao.
We are concerned as the ACDP with section one two nine two.
Section one two nine two, ro, na jaka ACDP, re, eh, chunyaha, tata kayo.
It reads as thus.
Eh, balaha, kamo, hola, tela.
It says a child may consent.
Ere, wana, agana, dumalana.
I can't believe those two words are following each other.
Eh, hakidu melo, hore, ibila mafokama, bidi, ala, tela.
It is inappropriate.
Hawa, chwanere.
How can a twelve-year-old consent?
Totan, wana, badinwa, katsa twelve, agai tirala, jang tumala.
If we are saying in, in section one eight two.
Fine, ilohore, bohoku section one eight two, ribua jaana.
We speak of the care of the parent to the child.
Ribua ka, thokomelo yamutzadi, mo wane.
But when we come to the medical aspect.
Be, ano, harita, kamo, kanyenya, eh, karolo, eh, buanga, eh.
I will be brave on this one, Chairperson.
Ke batahohi, talosa, modula stulo.
How can a child give consent?
Hore, mo, wana, agai tirala, jang tumala, no kaza tse.
But you call the person is a child.
Merenzi re, re, hay, ya, kahanzi jana, ke wana.
We need to look at that.
Eh, ta, era, batlaho, re, re, ele koko.
Me as the parent, I'm the one who's paying for medical bills.
Ki, na, jaka, motzadi, yo, uduelela.
But the right of the parent.
Ma, ma, di, azaka.
Medically over the child is challenged strongly by, by, by parliament.
Medichwanelo, zeka, na le zola, jaka, motzadi, uchale, ilohore, tota, dia, hui, kiwa, fela, tata le te.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna talk about the elephant in the room.
So, ke, lho, huvua kabutatajor, senkana kasepejor na le jo.
Where does a child learn about vaccination at the age of twelve?
Hore, bana, be ituti le, kaya, kha, yah, hui, entiwa, balidi, waha, di, the twelve.
Where they can agree to be vaccinated or not be vaccinated.
Hore, ba, chwanichohoro, be tirale tumalano, yah, hore, jano, bakana, ba, entiwa, raskarabu la se.
I told my children, Chairperson, I am your parent, your teacher is not your parent.
Ke, reze bana, ke, modula stulo, ke, lo na, lo, bana, ke, badzadi, kase, badzadi, ba, badzadi, ba, 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 ruca, bana, kase, badzadi, ba, lo.
If I don't agree that you must be vaccinated and they vaccinate you, I am going to take all of the support chain, I'm gonna take them to court.
Hay, ilohore, ba, hui, enta, na, kirile karo, oska wa, entiwa, ki, lho, ba, zela, di, kato.
Because this, this child is a gift from God.
Kahonawa, na yo, yo.
Unto my family.
Ke, mpo, eh, jang komu dimo, mpo yalelapa la.
Chairperson, family is important.
Eh, lelapa, le, bu thoko, modula stulo.
Family is not a Christian concept.
Le, 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 lapa, kase, kaka, yo, fela, popolo, esarensi.
But family is a universal concept.
Tot'a, eh, le lapa, ke, popolo, molubukonloti.
The reason why our country is in, is in wakvaya.
Le baka la, hore, bohoku, thaka, thaka, ni jana, mona, henya, ro, na.
We don't know who's the child, who's the parent.
Ke, le, ke, hore, harisa, hore, motzadi, ke ma, wana, ke ma.
Is because there's a systematic attack on the institution called the family.
Ke, ka, le baka la, hore, malapa, sitewo, se, 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 hutoe, le lapa, sa, kase.
Eh, handi mani, muletutse.
Eh, kahan, Africa's pride.
There's a word but say.
Okay, e, 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 e.
All right, finish up, finish up.
That's my last punching point.
Yes, please.
There's a word but say. So is the family ha?
Eh?
I, I told you it's a punching point. As the family goes. So goes the church. So goes the community. But as we can see, the current, uh, institution or current government.
Sosos kan sin, di, haidige regera.
Is trying every way and every manner to frustrate the church.
Probeer op, elke, muthlike, meni, mekar, te fristre.
But we do not realize we are actually frustrating families.
Ma, but us ni besefne, sosos, us, entlik, gesine fristre.
And here is the surprise.
And ye, here is the surprise.
That, uh, the scientists don't, cannot calculate.
What wetenskaplikis ni, ni kan bereken.
If you break up the family unit.
As yai, di gesins, yenait, obre.
You are systematically breaking the country.
Is jais talso, matig, bezak, ondi lande, te bere.
Why is teenage pregnancy so high?
Warum is teenage schwangerschaft is so high?
Why is alcohol abuse amongst children so high?
Warum is drunk misbreak, unerkanesu?
Why is drug abuse amongst children so high?
Warum is dwelle misbreak, unerkanesu?
Why is the pregnancy rate amongst the fourteen and twelve-year-olds so high?
Warum si schwangerschaft, push, unertwoven, forty years?
Because there is, there's no heavy hand from government.
When you're here, eh, itni, eswar hand, esstar hand.
To protect the children.
But you're kanesu, beskar.
Okay, thank you.
Goodbye, danke.
We are still talking, and I've been talking audibly well.
For sure, eh, I could proud, I could.
I do understand your masks make me to become hot.
All right, all right, we can't give you talking and talking until cow comes home. But at least I've given you an opportunity to find, finish up.
Chairperson, you have been lenient with the previous speakers.
For sure, eh, was, eh, gedodig, me, the fore.
You remember that?
Can I request you, uh-uh, 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 uh-uh.
No, I'm just saying, Chairperson.
No, finalize and finish up.
You, you have been lenient. Is it because it's a question?
I'm also lenient to you. I'm giving you one minute to finalize and finish up. There are hands, there are hands, there's also another hand there.
Now I'm in arrest, Chairperson.
Okay, okay.
I've, I've just been told here that, that, I don't know, I don't know what's happening here.
People would like to speak.
Yes, Chairperson, but all I'm.
finalize and finish up. I'm giving you one minute. Don't answer anything, please. I'm requesting you, by the name of God.
Now, now she's blackmailing me. Okay, um, in, in conclusion, Chairperson, what I would like, what I would like this, this, uh, committee to do for us.
What I grahule, we're gonna, the committee for us, me do.
Become stronger on those who are selling alcohol to children.
Be stronger on those who are selling alcohol to children.
Become stronger those who impregnate our children in the schools.
Be stronger on those who can schwanger more.
What kind of society are we building?
What the type of society is, sos bezak, on the bank.
If we conveniently overlook all of these social needs.
Asos, alliri, mautskapliko, kwalen, ni, gerifli.
I thank you, Chairperson, that's fifty seconds.
Danki for sure, eh, was fifty second, eh.
Thank you.
Okay.
Amen. Uh, there was a hand from a social worker, we said we will, oh, there's also this one. You can come forward, uh, social worker, can you come forward? And can I ask, is there any department member that is here? Okay, so you have noted some of other questions, so we will give you an opportunity to respond to that. And, uh, members, I will give them those that haven't been answered, just to give guidance on them.
Thank you very much.
Kialibo ha.
Honorable Chairperson.
Eh, moto, kere, modula stulo.
Honorable members.
Le maloko, aru na, atotlacham, batotlachhi.
Committee of Social Development.
Le ba, bazongoli, fapengla, tabolo loa ho.
From Parliament.
Just a little bit. Le ko, Parliament eh.
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity.
Ke batahohi, lebo, hala, cholo eh.
Mine is not much.
Na, hakina, amanti.
Uh, remember, we're being guided.
Hakolo, hala, horo, holo, fano fa, ra, ka elo.
And the guidance that I've seen in front of me, that I'm having in front of me.
Me ka elo, eh, oh, eh, ribu, anganyone, eh, motengra, molau, bim, kia, ebona, motengayo.
Makes me happy.
Be, i, i, ay, intume di sa.
I, I feel like a proud South African.
Ki, ku, kakele, mwa, Afrika, bo, rayo, mutoto.
There was never a provision.
Eh, mona, kunifiti, lho, hono, snapa, kanyezo, epa.
That speaks.
Eh, ibuan.
Like some of the amendments are speaking.
Jaka, di tabolo, di, fano fa, di buwa.
On the particular section.
Ka, karolo, eh, rele.
I would like to applaud.
Ke rata, eh, hore, popo, tamole, reke.
Parliament members.
Lo na, maloko, Apalamente.
Uh, for the extensive work you have done.
Ka, ti, roes, senkana kasepe, lu, di rele.
Uh, I'm representing the ANC.
Yaka, hakensi, jano fa, ke, mwayediwa ANC.
And we support this bill.
Amancha!
Bila, bili eno eh.
We support this bill.
Awe, two! Bili eh?
We support this bill.
Eh, ray, amohela, ray, eh, eh, bili eno eh.
Uncontested.
Eh, eh, quanta, kama, tata.
You'll hear my voice is not nice.
Khumpione, eh, lente, la, me, kalem, monati.
We've been from a celebration, the ANC wins this province again.
Renterele, mobe, kiting, honamo, province eh, 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 re, re, finye, re, kape, province eh.
Honorable Kangstok will attest to that. Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Eh, moto, kere, uduze, lula, fano fa, ota, lo, nitifaleza, se. Kialibo ha, modula stulo.
Thank you very much, Amancha. Over to you.
Sanum libas, sabetun. As I was saying, Chairperson, my name is Nosipo Pungwayo. Okay, my name is Nosipo Pungwayo.
Eh, lina lamete, Nosipo Pungwayo.
I'm a social worker, thokomelo.
Eh, ke, modire du loa, hoko, thokomelo.
Yeah, I wanted to tackle the section twenty-one.
Ke, ke batahovu, haka, karolo, twenty-one.
Which talks about the, uh, responsibility, parental responsibilities and rights of unmarried fathers.
Eh, de, buaka, maikarabelo, badzadi, di, di, chwanelo, zabor, eh, baba, sangyala.
I think we should, uh, like, I've noticed that in our societies, we are having a lot of children that are a product of infidelity, kids that are suffering from divorce, kids that are a product of one-night-stand. Me specifying these things, I want you to, to focus on the fact that these kids might be rejected by their own biological fathers.
Ke, ke batahovu, hakan, kaya, hore, honali, bana, bale, banti, motikolo, honya, ro, na, bay, no, hore, bay, ile, baba, lo, hajana, ele, bana, badi, hora, kaza, bay, ile, bana, ke, bana, bay, no, hore, hona, jana, kaba, na, thokomelo, eh, ze, le, ze, sentla, kaza, moma, lapen, baba, ngaba, bone, eh, ba, uka, ma, noko, noko, ah, bu, thoko, amalapa, ah, tuge, eh, kila, kaza, ah, talo, mo, lapen, ki, se, ke, ke, batahohi, re, kere, se, le, thoko se.
And as a, as a result, that's why you find a lot of people that are going to kumbuleka ya, utatakho, because of, there is a need for belonging in our society.
Ke, sone, sos, bona, batobale, banti, bay, kule, na, ne, la, ro, na, la, kumbula, ekaya, kaza, lele, lele, bidua, hore, otatakho, se, nosa, bonza, hore, honali, koke, eh, holo, tota, ya, thokomelo ya, badzadi, mobanemba.
So this goes without saying that, eh, we, this, this, this issue of belonging has long-lasting consequences on our community.
Kajalo, ra, bona, hore, maikuto, abana, ah, hokoka, badzadi, tota, anali, di, pello, le, ze, di, zalo, baka, lolo, le, le, mobanemba, no, mos, charin, saro.
Even when we place kids in foster care, we have to locate the biological father of that particular child.
Le harisa, bana, kule, foba, filo, ah, hokoka, me, laka, bana, baba, snapa, thokomi, di, baba, ne, re, chwanichohoro, re, re, hokoba, na, le, re, wana, yo.
Unfortunately, we do not have, um, an act or a policy that compels a biological father to actually make contact with their, with their children.
Ya, nosasas, bu, thokoto, hore, hara, na, molau, okwadi, we, oile, hore, ota, patela, za, ra, hongwana, yo, lo, yo, hore, ah, hola, kana, lenwana, waha.
We do however have the law, the, the law for maintenance. Fathers are forced to pay maintenance, but they are not forced to actually spend time with the kids, which is the need of that particular child.
Ya, ni, kaba, swabir, na, molau, oile, hore, o, patela, bor, re, hore, ba, thokomelo, bana, baba, ne, ba, patela, di, support, me, kahonamolau, oile, hore, o, barutwe, zahore, ba, senyanako, eh, nti, bana, le, bana, baba.
Because a child cannot tell the value of money, the child just needs the father to be there. They can't say just because the father is maintaining, I'm happy, because my, my father is paying money into my mother's account, but they want a sense of belonging.
Kahonene, bana, tota, bone, eh, kaba, itse, bu, thoko, yamadi, khaso, hore, hara, re, anza, abapatela, madi, ah, hoba, thokomela, wana, ta, bari, ka, itumele, kahora, re, wan duela, na, se, hokasi, di, re, sasale, nte, kohor, wana, yo, lo, hore, ay, tumele, othoka, la, rato, le, che, hezo, eh, le, hola, kana, hara, kela, ra.
So I would request, however, that maybe we make an emphasis in section eighteen, where it talks about the parental responsibilities and rights, so that we ensure that this need is met in our society, because of even children that are born with a disability, they are more vulnerable.
Kajalo, re, kere, zahore, most section eighteen, re, kere, zenele, ze, nka, ew, egit si, si, yang, ele, hore, bana, bata, ba, hona, hore, thokomelo, eh, 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 se, kala, se, nosasas, bu, le, kela, re, kona, hase, twala, and then, eh, so, setla, tota, isetla, amalile, bana, baba, na, le, bu, hola, le, di, le, ze, di, ntsen, jalo, batla, ujwa, thokomelo, eh, bay, thoka.
Eh, another section that I would like to tackle on.
Me, karolo, eh, we, ke, batahohi, feta, la, koho, yone?
Is section one fifty.
Yone, ke, section, kaza, karolo, one fifty.
It does not state our children that are born with mental health illness.
Eh, bua, fana fa, ka, bana, bay, no, hore, ba, ka, tsolo, bana, le, eh, bo, le, ze, kaza, bu, tatajor, talo, hany.
And section one nine one.
Eh section 191.
It states the department makes provision for the establishment of mental health facilities for children with mental health, but we do not have such.
Ibuajaana koré elefa pa lekadi ra korohona lechulachany aho hona lema fele, a chocomelo ya bana baba nalematata akhaloany. Me se uisiguanso hasiyo, hasidi re.
I thank you and I do agree with the amendments.
Kialaboha, me bilekai amochela chabololo eh momalawaro.
Greetings, everyone.
Eh dumelamba chaeso.
My name is Kilebuhile Dondolo.
Linalameki Kilebuhile Dondolo.
I'm a social worker.
Ki mudiredu loa.
Based at Chocomelo.
Belene na kidra lebakwa ma seteosa Chocomelo.
I'm gonna be very brief.
Ki tla ibuafela kabukutwa.
I'd like to say I agree with the amendment, Bill.
Ki kibatachalosa fano koré ki dumala nale mulao o no o chabolo tway.
And looking at clause 10.
Me hakileba eh poleloana ya semolao ya 10.
That speaks to section 21, the rights of unmarried fathers.
Eh amanale section 21 eh ibuankabore baba sangyala.
I am glad that the amendments were made.
Ki dumela korohu ilaha di ra di chabolo lofo.
Because we have cases whereby fathers are denied access to their children.
Kahona lebanatata bailelo koré borre ba chanelwa ya hobona bana babo.
And unreasonably by the biological mothers.
Me vichelle slose nusaseidiwa ki mahwenguana kaboye.
You find that they will go to the family advocate.
Ukara baka na kongo hao ya koma lapeng ansenjalo, oyahueta.
To draw parental responsibility plans.
Oya ho ba tusa hona lele na ne lamai karabelo abotadi.
But then in most instances, those plans are not signed because the biological mother would refuse to go for the appointment, they'd refuse to go for mediation.
Otafi chela korohana chansi chulachany eh haydirila haysainiwi kalabakala koré, bo ma bana ba chana, ho ya hona konge nding ebeyulo ya koré, chulachany e no e etla ho konera leho felele diwa senke.
And fathers, then they are left again without building a relationship with their children, without having access to their children, without exercising their rights as fathers and their responsibilities towards children.
Ya nusasechola borre bantefela jalo, ele koru janong ba chanelwa hobona bana, cha bakonohwa cha botzala nufahara cha bonele bana, cha bakonohu di ra cha samai karabelo abone jaka borre, se uena butata jobutwa lampi.
So I am glad that now we can proceed, or the family court advocate can proceed if the mother does not attend unreasonably to such appointments to allow the fathers to have responsibility and rights towards their children.
Ya ni ki dumela koré rekachona chutwa lapeli jano, haylo koré me wa chana chudira jalo borre bo ne ba kachona chutwa lapela ba di ra cha samai karabelo abone jaka batadi jaka borre, eh leho chocomela koré di chokose uze wana analiso ne hona lekamanolele leho chocomela leho muete la, dilose udi kachona chudira jano.
Yes, and section 22, that speaks to parental responsibility and rights.
Me karolo di chu yo na ibuaka maikarabelo abotadi di di chwanelo.
I'd like to focus there on the views of the child.
Imohyo ne fano fatbatla chubuaka tsela ewana aleban dilokayon.
I think it's very important that the views of the child are considered.
Ya kanya korota chobuchoka korere relevanti ponole maikuto angwana.
Because sometimes children are just forced to stay with their mothers or the one parent without their views being heard.
Kahanakatina kosele banabapateli diwa korobannele bo ma bo ne, kuantechaha ho ba uka pele korobone baré.
Yes, and in some instances, we find that then there's more problems that are coming up from that, where children are displaying behavioral challenges.
Ga ideni ha gankayasiu, rederifkela ele koroselu sesezala matata aman awo getachiling, mo uvichelanwana analematata a, tsela ituarangayon, inawana fele yo nalematata.
So yes, I'd like to thank you for that.
Ki batla chokolabocha la se.
Thank you, thank you very much. It seems as if there are no hands for now. Then, at the back. Where's that? I hope you are the last one.
Nusalefala korokoena wabo fe.
And we will request the department to come to the mic also and be able to answer some of other questions.
Membera ra ho chamorla ko papa batongolefa ping koroba lefa microphoneo, ma kela ho araba di poto di kuse di buditwe.
Over to you.
Sabakake saha korra.
Eh dumelamba chul.
Greetings, honorable members.
Kinan tlamoring habanamut.
I am le tlamoring habanamut.
Ki kegi ba ra kubokamuso umbiske. I'm a kegi ba kumbokamuso umbiske.
So I'm a kegi ba in the kubokamuso midike.
Eh, kinalabutata ka mulao.
I have a problem concerning the law.
Ya chocomelo ya bana.
A law related to child protection.
Mar ya amochela.
But I do accept it.
Kanki koroko nabu papa bana.
The thing is, we as fathers.
Ki nitiretiniwa mokatali lungu chokomela bana baru.
Yes, it is true that we are being denied the right to take care of our children.
Mosapoto ra itlachanelo ho chosapota bana baru.
And when it comes to supporting our children, yes, we do it immediately.
Mare, hona di chweju zedi untselo kumbatadi ba di zamobanimbabone without our concern.
But there are some decisions sometimes that are being made with regard to our children without our concern.
Kana kweno ole papa ubichellelo koré khaona lezenuleli inzi.
Sometimes you find that as a father, you don't end much to be able to pay a bright price for your daughter or for your child.
Kubuku kalbakala kaohanu le muhyon.
Now, because of that problem.
Lu kaohanu wena lema wanguana.
You find that you separate maybe from the mother of the child.
Ukirea mulikanu umum.
And then she finds herself another soulmate.
Baikamu kanzale nyalu.
And now here they proceed maybe towards getting married.
Ma wanguana konota decision korwana atespanza reumum.
And then you'll find that the mother will just make a decision to conclude that the child must adopt the same name of that new man.
Umuraha wana ba kopanali di kuwe, sedi chokan cultural.
And then later, the child will now face some challenges or cultural challenges.
Sediba tlamapa.
Which actually need the father to step in.
Ni kuku pa koromo la o walone, obankanyewe.
So I would like that law, that piece of legislation, to also be amended.
Koré bana basati nyoma katali lungu hammakuwana ayakuli nyalungu.
So that the children must not feel under pressure when their mothers are getting married.
Wana wansa dilikaspanza ko hammakuwé.
So that now the problem being related to the fact that the child must not continue with the same name that she has but must adopt the new same name, which the mother will adopt.
Kalbakala ho bana ba hitu had, batuva simboni because of cultural things.
Because sometimes children, they evolve, they become what they actually are not, and simply because of cultural reasons.
Kalbakala ho re kubukona le conflict between mama le papa.
And the whole thing is actually been caused by conflict between the mother and the father.
Mama ba filaku kipangwana away from papa waha.
And then the mother then will strive to keep the child away from the father.
So susuwaliso ni hasasiama ka korona borre.
That is totally not acceptable to us as fathers.
So ni kuku pa koronele mulao o ze ngan mobanin, we melambaana.
So I appeal that there be some piece of legislation that can actually stand for the rights of the children.
Koré bana.
For these children.
Ba hona kikarabela habanale 18.
To be able to be responsible when they are at the age of 18. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we request the department?
Rialebocha, erokopale fapa.
Thank you for the opportunity and good day to everybody.
Kilebucha la cholo madumehoboche.
My name is Si Pongosi.
Eh linalameki Si Pongosi.
From the Provincial Office of Social Development.
Chozwa ko provincial office ya chabololoa.
I'm going to respond to some of the tony issues that people have raised.
Ki chohu araba eh di poto tama tatama wa azelelenseen aho batoba budize, di poto zedi buditwe ngibone.
And I'm gonna try to be very, very brief.
Ni bilekita ibuafela kabukutwa.
There's a tony issue that people or previous speakers have raised regarding the issue of foster care.
Botata bo bo singana kasepe bo bo chabisweki si buise se fitile, si buaka chokomelo cha bana komafilon ah ilohora cha ba chocomelo chosa banabatadi.
The very same act that we are amending or getting input in order to amend it today.
Eh o ne mulao o, o renzing ramohala di tsaya loza korohona chabolo eh humpiano jana.
Is the act that is governing our child protection services.
Ki bolao oile korohona kaela di tirelo ta tsirelezo ya bana baru.
In terms of foster care placement.
Malibanaleho ba isa kolefelela chocomelo ka hona basna batadi.
This act is very clear.
Bolao o no o, ka opota poti.
Once an application has been lodged at our department.
Fa koseto chotenzo ko po eh ukolofa pingla ro.
That matter must be finalized within 90 days.
Ha eh e tsanechore e konnele, momalazing ale 90.
I repeat, within 90 days.
Mo sabakensambalazi ale 90.
That is three months.
Eleni di kuwe di dele taro.
What this means is this.
Se use bolela koré.
The social worker should have completed the investigation.
Eh mudiredu loa, tsanechore abafe di zegadi pakisi so chochetaha.
Should have taken the matter to court.
Tsanechore aba, bile ai sesele kani ele o kokotla tsakele.
So that the foster parent or the prospective foster parent can get an order.
Koré yo itlenho hona motadi wangwana, yo itlenho itzeelangwana, aba amochese tayo eh zoan kokotla tsakele.
It is this very same order which allows the foster parent to apply for a foster care grant.
Eleni mulao o, na o o o lelang mekaza motadi yo itzeelangwana yo, korora adira ko po ya hona ba tusa ya madia aho mo chocomelo.
Once the order has been issued.
Ya noha, taole sese insi tway.
And the client has applied for a foster care grant.
Me eh mutiyo le yo itlenho itzeelangwana asa adira ko po ya hona wa tusa ya madia o.
It is the responsibility of our social workers.
Kajalo ena ubikarabelo jo ba di redulu aho baruna.
To monitor that or supervise that placement.
Ho baye eh ma emo au licho leho a okame.
We are saying as a province.
Rigua jana re province eh.
At least a social service professional.
Koré ene mudiredu loa was a professional.
It can be a social worker.
Ekana mudiredu loa.
It can be a social auxiliary worker.
Ekana mudiredu loa wana kuana.
Should at least visit that home.
Tsanechore adira koré aye telele la paleo.
At least once in three months.
Mo ekana cha we fe la budikuwe di dele taro.
To ensure that the placement is fine.
Ho ya ho choma misa koré hufedi zo ka kanya korwana akana atsewa.
To ensure that the grant that the foster parent receives is used to the best interest of the child.
Leho yela choko koré tusa ya madia eh aye ne wanyo chokomela wangwana o, idire se diwa maika elelo aho chokomela wangwana o katela eh mule.
And number two.
Me ya bo bedi.
There was an issue of street children or children languishing in town.
Hona lekachanyene ibuaka bana baba ebeyla fe la mobi bilechosa mudito ropo.
We are saying, or the act is saying.
Eh mulao war.
These are children in need of care and protection.
Batoba no ba je bana bailelo koroba choka chocomelo litsirele.
So whenever you come across a street child or a child working or living on the street as the act says.
Kajalo hatwe ya khamala ubuana kolele na ka hau kopanale wana yo namumum bile, chosa wana yo beraka mumumile, aibe la mumumile.
You have or you may or you must report that case to our social workers.
Tsanechore o kana wa chosa o kana wa bonako tsanechora weho becha kitiya wana o, ko ho ba di redulu aho.
We've got offices throughout the districts, throughout the five districts that we have in the province.
Renalizi office eh mo di khaolonsadi district is chochetarona te tano eh zeho ka bechanga ho zo.
In each office where there are social workers.
Office eh engulengwe eh hona le ba di redulu aho mo hyo ne.
There is a supervisor or a social work supervisor.
Hona le ba ukamedi chosa ba di redulu aho ba elekor ba ukamete chulachanyo eh.
Which means if you have reported the matter to the social worker.
Mo horan horan, haoseto elekor ubihila kiti eh no eh, ko ho mudiredu loa.
And you don't see any progress or any form of intervention.
Me ubonanke te kachona katalo pele yo tslechosa kachona kato tarabolo ipe fe la edirwa.
It's your responsibility to take the matter up.
Ki ubikarabelo jo cha ho korohana osale kanyi omoracho cha.
You can report that social worker to the supervisor.
O kana wa ya ho mo chocomeli mo ukamediwa mudiredu loa ho o, o ya ho becha butata jo noko fe.
If you don't get any joy.
Ya eh haylo koroto lapelo tsusa itumele.
From the supervisor.
Chozwa ho yo ukamete di redulu aho.
We have a district office in Chocomelo, yeah, in Francis Park.
Renale office, district office ko Chocomelo hona mo ho maspala wana.
Where there's a social work manager.
Ko hona le managera wa di wa ba di redulu aho.
Where you can lodge your dissatisfaction or complaint.
O o kana wa ya ho chakela eh wongoracho ya cha ho leho sa itumele angahaha ho ko fe.
If you don't get any joy from her or him.
Haylo korolele neha tswana fe la cha wa itumele cha woni di karabo.
Then we have a district manager who's overseeing the whole district.
Ya no berenrenale managera wa districti yo tsle, yo elekor ya ne e no o ukamete districti yo tsle.
If you don't get any joy from the district manager.
Haylo korolele ne district managera feleza ho swabisa.
We have a provincial office.
Ya no renalema kankediwa province.
Where we have our HOD and MEC.
Mo hyo narale HOD le MEC.
That's how far the matter can go.
So kama zama jebo kaga la jo kanyi elo eh eka palamele langwa ho yo.
There was also an issue of children being given alcohol or suffering from substance abuse.
Kapé, ukilakanala kanyi euma chilua ya bana bailelo koroba ne wa majalwa chosa diriti bati.
We all know that in terms of the law.
Ra izo korohu ya kamo lao.
It is illegal to sell alcohol to a child.
Ka ho ka famolao koré kiseta bana bujalwa.
So if anybody or if you happen to see somebody selling alcohol to a child.
Kajalo haylo korona le mongue chosa udi rekelo korohana obone mongwa ariki seta wana bujalwa.
You can report that matter to the police.
O katza kanyi e wo fe becha komapo di si.
It is not acceptable, colleagues.
Ha, ho chelila ka wadumelewa.
And there was an issue about child abuse.
Me be honala kanya tsoto ka bana ele ya chakisiwa.
Yeah, where somebody said children are abused and nothing is happening. For example, he made an example letter at school, I'm sure.
Eh uila achalosa fano fako uchalele elekor sengu sidirele kanguana uila ba socha, boso sa se wakato epé onadiri sa skolo sa sese di re, se kai sa sese di rechelo ko skolo.
Under such circumstances, you can report that incident to the police.
Mo hara hamai ma ansenjalo oka becha kanyi e kwama po di si.
Or to the social workers.
Chosa wa ebechela ba di redulu aho.
Yeah, the social workers will ensure that the matter is followed up until it goes to court and the whole process unfolds.
Ba di redulu aho bona batela choko koré kanyi eh no eh esalomo ra ho kuchka eh horo ho kotla tsakele ho ya kuchka ko itsurenseyawela te.
Yeah, that's what I can cover, unless if there are others that have missed. I think the other ones were general in relation to the act.
Ki di incha se ki kibatachudi akarata zeo hakitohora aho nalezedi we, mekeza korona le nali zedi zeli za kakarezo fe la zedi amanale mulao.
But I want to thank our participants for raising concerns and alerting us to some of the issues that are currently happening.
Me kira ta kholabocha baba ta karolo koru kakiseta ma tata a, ni di di zedi di la.
Will you please, will you please give them the toll-free number that you are using or whatever number that you are using if they are not getting the joy out of all these processes and levels that we are talking about?
If you are old, I can give you our provincial number.
Enkalona ya number ya province ya rona.
Will you please take pens and write the number?
Erokopale zeye di pene lokolo kalo nomore eh no eh.
053.
053.
874.
874.
9100.
9100.
Repeat yourself, please.
053.
053.
874.
874.
9100.
9100.
That is the number for provincial office during working hours.
Ki nomore ya province, ya officer of province, ekana koya diura za tiro.
Thank you very much. Eh, I know for a fact that you are talking in a normal situation, that a person must follow the processes in terms of the foster care. But there is a challenge in terms of the court delays. And everyone who's seated here is aware that cases were delayed because of COVID. So you might have not been successful in terms of getting the 90 days that you are talking about. But make a follow-up on those cases and also if you don't get joy, call that number and write the date and the time. Because the other thing is that they don't answer the calls in the offices. So please, please, thank you very much for those responses. Can we then give over to the members in terms of the general questions that were asked, oganye, the comment? Can I, which one is ready? I'm not going to give all the members, but those that, comrade, eh on.
Sore, karetsa di incha sa malokwarona.
Who else?
Di tsaya lo.
Oh, honorable. Oh, honorable Mangai.
Good, good afternoon again.
Eh dumelamba chaeso.
I'm just going to make a few comments.
Ki batla konsa di tsaya lo di le maloanyana fe la.
And then I'm going to also have a question.
Memra ho kamo, kitla boza li di po to.
Okay, I'll, I'll stick to the comments.
Eh, kitla, bua di tchwa elo fe la.
Yeah, um, I am referring to Mr. Pendulo.
Eh, ki ba ta ho bua ka rempendulo.
Uh, who spoke about the access to information, especially on our, in our rural communities.
Ona abuaka kanya uki tchela la zedi, mo se to soho, soho lo gohulu, mu meze se la kaya.
It is a very important note that.
Kaya wo ebo tchokatota.
Because public participation.
Kalaba kala ho re, hoza karolo kama lukasu cha ba.
Is very important when it comes to legislation.
Ho bu tchokatota, male bangle mula.
And it is a very important um issue.
Me bilaka eh, ki kanyeho re bu tchokata.
That we must improve.
Eh, retshwanese ho re, retoka fa se mocho yo ne.
Then, um, in terms of the neglect of children.
Me hara kamo kanya ya ho tchokomulukiu ka bana.
I am very concerned.
To ta kyuwa ke tchwenye, ta.
As a, as a community member myself.
Na, ja ka inzi le, na gelele lo kola sa cha ba.
And as a leader within our communities.
E bilaki lemo, itele di pele, mo hara kama lukasu cha ba.
There seems to be a mindset.
Ho na le zela eh, ke te batoba kanya kayo ne.
That the state must do everything.
Ya ho re, puso yo ne, chwanese ho re, uki dira se ngo le se.
It causes the anger.
Esu le sene si khalifi sa ba to.
That we witnessed with a young man that stood up here to speak.
Se rebone ja ka, leka wanalile, leli buaka bohale fanofa.
The neglect of children.
Kanya ho tchokomulukya ka bana.
Is our problems.
Ki, ki ma tataaro?
In our communities.
Ho ne, mo tikulo ho nyaro.
If we see a child has been neglected, is vulnerable.
Faro bona ho re wanagwana, ho tchokomulukiu, e bilaka wa la mu.
We must contact social services.
Retshwanese ho re, ri, kola kanya le baditiro la za loa.
And as communities, we must address it.
Me rona ja ka, eh, malokasu cha ba, rarrabole no bu tatajo.
The case of sexual assault against a teacher.
Eh, kanyeho eh, ama muruta bana yo na asutla wangana, katobalanoo.
Who has sexually assaulted a child.
Kanajaana, osutile wangana, katobala.
As a community member.
Ja no, anta lelo lo kola sa cha ba.
You can lay a charge yourself.
Lo na ja ka malokale cha ba, asa cha ba, lo kaya eh beha kanyeho ya kha.
At the police station.
Eh, ko ma po di si.
You can engage your community forums.
E bilaki le, lo kadi sa li di foruma za lo na za mo tikulo ho nyalo na.
And address it with the police.
Ebe lo, akarata ma po di si, lo tlo tle, ba na kama tatajo.
When they don't follow up on cases.
Elo ho re eh, kizi eh, eh, ita, ho no ho bu la, go se po di si.
Sexual assault and neglect of children is all of our responsibility.
Eh, kanyeho eh ya ho so toka bana, katobala, ho tchokomulukya fe la kabo ne, ke kanya massis.
And we must use the, the organs of state and if they don't do their job, we must follow the process.
Me, retshwanese ho re, re trise, akarata ma fa pa, apuso, me hai elo ho re, leba na kama la, dile di tu laha, zedi tchwanese eh, retshwanese ho re, eh, fiti se za kuapeli.
That's it, thank you.
Eh, ki ya le boha.
Ki ya le boha, mudula stilo?
Eh, thank you Chair.
Ki le bohe, li di po to, sen se ba di poza.
Eh, thank you very much for all the questions raised.
Le bohe, lo ho re, department eh, zedi we, idi arabi le kabotla.
And thank you very much also for them being commented on by the department.
Ho, udi sa wangana?
Eh, raising a child.
Ho za ya, community as a whole.
Eh, it takes the whole village to do so.
Retshwanese re di re, kana, ta ho re, rohudi se bana ba rona sen.
We have to work very hard to raise our children properly.
Re ba rutya ma itsholo.
Teach them conduct.
Ga ho re, hara kaskera ba rutya ma itsholo, re lo su pa, mu tomo, obi za unho rumende, fa le, ele rona ho rumende.
Because if you don't do so, then you are going to point our fingers, even some of the members of the government, when the responsibility was supposed to be ours.
Mu tohaa, za mu community nyalo na.
When someone arrives in your community.
Aba fitla, abaya, tavernea, kache kana shebinimopileha schoolo.
And then he comes and establishes a tavern or his shebin in front of the school.
Ki ma ika ra belo a community eh ra dang, sa cha ba sa yo, na ho re, sohule se nde, eh ma.
It is the responsibility of you, members of the community, who love your community so that everything can go well there.
Ho sa kata zeho, ho re, ona le wangana, orha ona wa.
And it doesn't matter whether you have a child or you don't.
Le me, ho na le me la wa na, ya maspala, eh ring, ho tuha skala se, uki tcha skala se, ha ho kita, ho na le, so se, sohana li shebini. Le ye lo, boza ho re, di ba lo, sa ba wanadi eh ring.
You must stand up because there are pieces of legislative, legislation from the municipalities that actually have set boundaries to say, from this particular boundary to that one, nothing like this should happen, etcetera. So you must know that use those processes.
Kinse ku, wa le buaka ho re, accountability, accountability.
I've been listening you speaking about accountability, accountability.
Le lo na le tshwanese le, nele, accountability, kaha counties are the municipality.
So you also must have an accountability of making the municipalities accountable.
Because rona re kaka la le maspala, ke lo na le lenhaufilo.
Because we ourselves are very far from the municipalities and you are very close to them.
So hara kadi sa, ho rumende, oh, mora to.
So if we can use the government that is right within the people.
Ya godeng, ha opalezwi, refale, unzide eh nomore ya moha la, go leka ba tcharandi.
Eh, which means that if maybe you have tried everything, the gentleman here has already given us the number that we can actually use.
So soha, pesa ke ba dang, ho se hadisa, kana ho se fiti.
One other thing that I would like to emphasize and comment on.
Renali, the constituents, parliamentary constituency offices.
So we have the parliamentary constituencies.
The offices eh, di rezo lo, na ho re, le eh, gohuto, na.
So these are the offices and we, actually they are meant for you to visit them, to go to them.
Renali, mu too, tchokometi, ore midang support staff, mo officei.
We have people who are actually taking care of things, they are being referred to as support staff in these places.
Renali, mu tore midang ho re, ki field worker.
And there is some whom we call the field workers.
Support staff eh za ya, ha, membera isio, eh za ya, information eh yo, eh, mu toa dang, ala kayo.
So the support staff's responsibility is to take all the information that maybe a member of the community has brought forth when the staff member eh is not there.
Field worker wa za ma ya mama harenha lo na, because ha emela, political party epe, we emezilo na sa cha ba.
Then the field worker is the one who visits within among yourselves, because he's not representing any political party, but he is representing you as members of the community.
So ha, ha za ma ilo mo lo na, ha gera ile dinta, wa, wa itis mo wa, officei, osenteng, olengo parlamenteng, kama za tiro.
So once he has been able to gather all the information, he's going to take this information and actually give it to the member who was not present at the time in the office.
Ki ko pa ho re, di incha zehre di buanze, ariditshara hanne ho re, reskera emela, mu tomo, orisa iting ho ro, ota le, mo ho ro na, eh, retla ta, rokona, ho re, po ta di oze, aridiruse di officei te ho re. Retta ta rokono ba na ho re, ah, Jane Mangani, ha gera ile di incha za ro na, wa di arabelana.
So I would like you to take note of that point, that what you need to do is to go to these offices and report yourselves, instead of waiting for someone whom you don't even know when they gonna come. But you have to go there and make sure that someone has been assigned this responsibility, obviously takes account of it.
Halika di ra ya lo, letla be li, ro na, kana riditebe, le ma tchwalo, na lo ho emela lo, na le le sa cha ba sa ro.
So when you actually take uh part, what happens with us here is that we are your eyes and ears and your representative.
Le lo na, letshwanese, le re, le re tisi, se les bonang, se les akoni, se se sakone, ho re, seka solveha, le si tisi, officei, ho re, ta ta rokono, ho si, ho si lukis.
So you need to tell us if maybe there is an unsolved problem, make it known to us, make it known to the office so that we can see how this can be solved.
Na, ki ya le bo.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you Chairperson.
Kalaba kama eh, mudula stilo?
Yeah, thank you very much Chairperson.
Eh, kala boha, badila stilo?
Chairperson, the lady that sits there did raise a very important point.
Eh, kizi diro na, yo di zu fanofa, o kakisete, inkae bu tchokatota.
Yes, she did raise the issue that they need to be in alignment with other acts.
Uila abuaka fanofa ho re, eke te, me la eh no kabobe di, eh, kadiro ho re, ezama isane.
Yes, I think it's important that the portfolio need to have a meeting with all other departments, like your Department of Justice.
I think, eh, ya bona fanofa ho re, ele fa pa, rona ja ka, ko bi dia portfolio, le le fa pa, le le tchana le, le fa pa la, za bu siya misi, eh, o kanawa tchokoha, baka tchoma tcha eh ma, tchoma eh.
Because a child at the age of sixteen can give consent to sexual acts.
Kalaba kala ho re wanagwana, wa di wa kadi li sixteen, akakona uki dira tumala, no ho ya kamolao eh wa bana.
The basic conditions of employment allow a child to be at the age of fifteen, to get temporary employment.
Me lao me teo, eh, ya molao, kahawa na, yo, wa di wa kadi li fifteen, eh, uguwa fanofa, wa ama di incha zedi, amanale za tiro, ho za ta kiro.
And same as the Schools Act and the number of other acts. And the number of other acts.
Mo ho le, me lao eh be we, ele malo.
Yes, so that's why I think it's important that all the departments must get together so that we can bring the Children's Amendment Act or in line, or that acts in line with what the children.
Ki kalaba kala yo re, ba na ho re, o kanawa le ma, ma fa pa na, akakopa na, mo ho, elo ho re, atla akonohona fasela, o ba na ho re, akata bisanya dang, molao wa bana, mo ho le me la eh be we.
And thank you.
Eh, ki ya le boha.
Are there any other hands? Ay bo. Baie danke forsteter. Ik will summit Rudy, funny answer di appears.
I want to agree with Rudy of the ACDP.
This is true, Rudy, that the rights and responsibilities of the older teenager should be clearly written down. And it is also that we in our communities, not only by the tree, Peter, while he is young.
And it's true that in our communities, we know the saying of bending the tree while it's still young.
So we need alternative ways outside life, how to discipline our children.
So you are quite right, we do need other methods of disciplining our children other than corporal punishment.
You are also correct, as you say, in these families disintegrate, there will be nothing left of society. That is also a recurring, strengthening tendency of sexual harassment at schools, that stronger attention needs to be given.
There is also a steep rise in sexual misconduct in schools that needs to be addressed.
And I've heard the gentleman who spoke so passionately in the front here.
And I could also, the man with his voice so passionate, he talked also.
He said, and it's true.
He said, and it is true.
It doesn't matter if there's NGOs with great objectives and great vision and mission.
It doesn't matter if there's a new regerings organizations with great visions and missions and motivating.
If they don't have the necessary funding and if they are sitting with inadequate resources.
As they are not sufficient in the right to be born.
These NGOs could have life-changing impact on communities if funded right.
Here the NGOs can a great impact, a life-changing impact on communities as it right to be born.
And you're quite correct, sir, there's a lack of skills training and skills development centers for youth empowerment and upliftment in the northern Cape.
And you see, it's a more urgent, the North Cape is a strong record on youth development facilities.
And what is recurring was, was the first person who talked.
And what was worrying was the first person who had a speech opportunity.
It's known that the accessibility of this cap documentation, the children's document. Problematic was in that many people were not aware or informed of the forward-looking public involvement on community level.
He stated that there was not enough information and documentation and that the people were not informed of their right to attend public participation meetings.
Baie danke.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Baie danke forsteter.
My needs one comment.
I can't comment on them to leave.
Firstly, I would like to appreciate everyone who is inside this hall.
First things, I would like my dankbar, my dankbar advice, then we are all what is not said.
But more especially to those who contributed to the bill.
But specifically, the gene that was dragged through the waste network.
Because eh, our coming here is about the amendment bill.
Want our visit here is specific for the waste network.
But I will also want to thank eh those who raised the issues that were not part of the amendment bill.
But I would also thank you for the gene that is not a part of the waste network.
By saying to them that eh, your contributions or your eh consents will be taken care of.
And I would for you say that your, your frau and your good woman, your become it is, shall be spoken of.
My comment is about the advice.
My comment is well worth the advice.
That as members, you don't have to wait for the portfolio committee to come to your place.
What I would say for you as leaders of the community, you need to wait for the portfolio committee to come to you.
If there are pending issues that need to be attended to.
As there are important matters that we must speak or that has to be spoken.
I heard Honorable Mangani was also talking about them.
Here, my little man, he talked about it.
But there are structures and offices that you can take those eh issues to them.
But there are structures and cantor where you can take your becomeness.
And they will be addressed.
And it shall be spoken of.
I'm happy the social workers are here and the department is here.
I am very glad that the social workers or the social workers in the department are here.
But some of the issues that has been raised doesn't fall under the Department of Social Development, but to other departments.
But unfortunately, from the becomeness that is spoken, not a part or falls under the Department of Social Development, but under the department.
And the table on, on our right will take care of all the, the issues that has been raised.
And the table on the right side will look at all the questions that are spoken and the verband.
Lastly, with eh, that eh, Robert.
Last things, with Mr. Robert.
Eh, even Saul. By the time he was persecuting the children or the children of God. That's it's what I'm gonna be there, well, men's, the kindness of God for Volga. And it's a forecom as if ever since in the present time, see the norm for another. What you are pointing to the department or to the portfolio committee or to government, that it needs to be done by the department, I think it needs also to be done by your good selves. And what you said, it would get done for the department of the portfolio committee and all this more, then I think it would work good for the yourself. In my culture. A child is for us all. So when you see something happening with a child. We don't have to say, "I'm waiting for that parent or I'm waiting for that, for government to come and assist." As parents, we need to handle the issues. More especially the church. Whatever is happening, if the church can become stronger and pray for this nation, everything will change. Even where the government is failing, if the church is there to stand by the side of government, I think God will listen to them and all shall be fine. Thank you very much. Bye, thank you. Thank you very much. Alright, you are so sweet that you are on time. The time is half past twelve now. I didn't want to pressureize you by saying at least by one o'clock, we need to be out here. But I promised you that we are not going to delay you. And we have to observe the COVID regulations. In terms of not holding meetings for quite a long time. The only concern that I'm having is that the gentleman, I can't remember his name, in terms of the street kids. The concern that I'm having is the street kids issue. And I would like also to commend you in front of the gathering in terms of giving yourself over to whatever NGO and volunteer for that NGO. But in South Africa, the whole South Africa, we've got a challenge in terms of the street kids. I'm not a social worker, no. But when I see kids roaming around, I always stop and ask them, "Where are their parents?" Because definitely I know those parents are getting the grant. And report that to the social workers and they will make a follow-up in terms of taking whether where those kids are coming from. I follow it up with the most capital workers, so that they can now follow, um, to where, where the kinders from now come. And they will take them and reunite them with their parents or homes. But tomorrow morning, they will again gather in that area and place. That shows that we still have a challenge to deal with as communities now. Because that tomorrow, I won't be around in that area. When you compare South Africa and other countries, you will get in other countries abroad, these places that they called a place of safety. But there is an act that deals with that. You can't take the child by force from that particular area without a consent from the parents and even from the child itself or himself. But it's what you've got, um, the kind, so no toestemming of the hour of four or self the toestemming of the kind himself or herself, the new, the veil of harvest. I'm just putting it forward to you as communities to assist us, the government and the department in terms of trying to persuade those kids to go back home and make follow-up sometimes in terms of taking whether the parents are able to get the grant or not. And I will do it for you, for still, and I will it or hand it on you as the community to help, um, to take, when I was here, can I sing, um, by the to where and um, let it to prove it um, in contact to come with the veil of harvest of um, in contact to come with the hours and um, after to come, if you're always well, God, the understanding of the regering of fun, of me. In a place where you volunteer, I want you before we leave, you make a follow-up or you go to the provincial department as the gentleman promised to make follow-up in terms of those things that are not being followed up. And check whether are they getting the funding, so that they are able to give you the stipend, at least as for the stipend. You can't volunteer up to an end or up to infinity. I will grab it, that the funny, what free will give work, for all, okay, so believe it, draw it, make it department up to volk or the befoising, what they, what they best ear, but it's weird, okay, that you need free will give work, until the ever height, and that is a limit. Tina is the portfolio committee, we will make a follow-up with the provincial department. So we won't be able to come back and check whether have you managed to achieve what you wanted to achieve. Otherwise, I really appreciate all the speakers that have spoken today. You have made our day and you have told us that you, mostly, I think it's one person who doesn't agree with the bill, but at least the House agrees with the bill to continue and all those that are still having outstanding issues. The department is here for now, the provincial department, the social workers can advise you on how to go about in such situations. And it's me, it's over, well, the understanding, seen, um, under you, um, for the understanding, for the, uh, weigstigings, weisontwerp. And it is by a good, I think that was not in person, what work like a problem, got it down me, but I will feel it, okay, I'm more like where ends, I will, um, that the department here is for you.